Do people see that flag yet?
Yep.
All right, let's roll. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
All right, so announce the meeting is being recorded. It'll be up on YouTube sometime this evening after the meeting. On three German chairman's additions deletions, I don't have any Jim, do we have any on the docket?
No.
Okay. For public comment period, anybody online? Please raise your hand if you have a question or something to say, otherwise we'll move along.
Seeing nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, 2.1, we have a bunch of an appointment, so point the following election workers for one year term, August 15th, August 2021. Can I get a motion, please? I think you can just do as listed.
Correct.
I move that we appoint the election workers as listed to terms effective August 15th, 2020 to August 15th, 2021. Is that sufficient?
That is.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Veronica?
No, no discussion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, do we have to do a row call vote because we're on Zoom?
It can't hurt.
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 2.2, appoint Paul Walter as recycling attendant one. Can I get a motion there, please?
I have a question, I want to discuss this, so do we?
That's fine, we make a motion first.
And then discuss, okay.
Correct.
I move that we appoint Paul Walter as a recycling attendant one effective, is this today, July 21st, shouldn't, is that correct?
It is because he was appointed temporarily as an emergency when they didn't have somebody. So this is actually the official appointment, which would then be subject to Cory and medical.
Effective July 21st, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and a Cory check.
And Jim, does that need a probationary period in there as well?
It would, yes. So to one year probation.
So add that to the motion?
Yes, please.
Do I need to make it again, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Veronica, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I, I guess my, the optics are not good on this. Can you have a family member supervising two children? I guess I have that concern, so I was wondering if supervisor is stepping aside on this. I also, I'm gonna just list my questions here, I also want to know who else was interviewed, where and how long this was posted? And who was present when the vote for appointment was taken by the Board of Health? So that's four questions.
Okay, I can handle the first one, and the other ones run to the Board of Health, so I would not be able to answer them. But the first question, can a family member supervise two other family members? And the answer is no, under the ethics laws, you can't do that. And in this matter, within the last month, we've seen a disclosure come in from the the Board of Health Administrator, who would normally in the the structure be supervising the recycling attendants, but in this case, she is a mom and the recycling attendants are both sons, so she was advised that she can't supervise, nor should she be involved in the appointment discussion. So that has been deferred to the town administrator, which would be the next up in the chain of command administratively. So if this were to go forward, I would be considered the supervisor of, and I would be signing payroll for both of the recycling attendants. That's not how it's been being done for some period of time. This would be the second term that Paul Walter has worked with us. And the other recycling attendant is is also been with us for some time as a son, so whether things going backward have been done appropriately in in that regard, I can't speak to. I can say just going forward that there has been effort made by the recyc, the health administrator to make sure that ethics is covered.
So does that mean then that she is no longer in the supervisory union? If she is not holding a supervisory position? I'm not trying to be mean or not give people a job, I just wanna, I, it's not clear to me that this is appropriate for the town.
The, the position of health administrator is recognized by the Department of Labor in the petition that asked me, the, the parent union filed. So the position, whether this incumbent is there or another, whether another incumbent could supervise the employees, whereas this one currently can't, or whether this one in another year with different employees could supervise. It's, it's the position specifically that's in the union, so yes, she's in the position, it's in the union, it will remain in the union. The, the fact is, we've got a situation where you've got children that are involved of a parent, so a combination is made for for supervision.
So when you say that the health administrator is a supervisory position, does that mean then that the conservation administrator and the planning board CBA administrator is also in the supervisory union?
No, no, those positions are in the administrative union.
So we have
We don't have any employees beneath them.
So we have an administrator who is not performing the supervisory duties because she can't.
Correct.
Under the ethics, conflict of interest ethics laws.
Correct. But the position that she holds, notwithstanding this circumstance, the position that she holds is recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a part of our collective bargaining unit. So she is in a position that is in the union. There's a certain part of the function that she can't do, but that doesn't change the fact that the position is in the union.
And how will you become the supervisor? Are you going to be taking trips to the recycling center on Saturdays?
Unlikely. My involvement is going to be no more, no less than it has been in the past, which is signing payroll and addressing any concerns. The way it was explained to me, and the way it's been being done, is their function is relatively well-defined, and because they fall under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health in terms of their operations, I wouldn't have the authority to dictate any operational change. So I'm administratively the supervisor, but beyond that, it would run to the Board of Health in terms of if this to be an operational change. Which we do have, and Wayne and I spoke about this earlier, we do have a member of the Board of Health that has a private citizen has submitted a letter to the select board looking to entertain a discussion about rolling the recycling function under either highway or cemetery and parks, but we're not there now.
Okay, I guess I'm uncomfortable with, with this, but anyway, let me go on. Where and how long was this posted, and were there any other candidates interviewed?
I would have to defer the Board of Health on that Veronica, and we do have one member who is currently on this meeting right now, I don't know if it's the board's pleasure to hear from her on that. But again, it's an elected board, so once the vacancy existed, they, they go forward and do their, as the water department just most recently did with one of their, they go forward with the, the advertisement and the interview.
I have no problem allowing Linda to answer those two questions, because I, I wasn't present at those meetings, and I don't think any of us were, so. Linda, you want to jump in, please?
Yeah, the best that I can tell was that it was posted on the, the board back in June. I have the date and email, but it sounds like it was all, you know, it was all within the regulations of timelines for posting. But it, the one, if it was posted on the website, has already been pulled down. I was told probably because the Board of Health made a motion to, to hire. And I was asked if any, I asked personally if anything was advertised, and the answer was no, there was a freezing spend. So to my knowledge, there were no other candidates.
But how, I guess this question is for you, Jim, how does a freeze in spending affect not interviewing or taking other applicants?
I won't speak for Linda, but I think what she's referring to is she was advised that an advertisement wasn't placed because an advertisement would cost money, and there's a spending freeze.
Correct.
When she said that to me, that was the first I had heard of that, and I can tell you that we have advertised other positions, notwithstanding the freeze, because we need to do the core business. You know, it's not discretionary to, to fill that position, it's something that's, that's required.
So on the, I guess my last question then was, was Carla present when the Board of Health voted to appoint her son?
I would defer to Linda again.
Yes, she was.
She didn't recuse herself or leave the room?
No, she did not.
I, I guess, I don't know, the optics just are not good, is what it comes down to. I don't know that there's any nefarious plot or anything like that, but it's just would a reasonably, a reasonable person have a nepotism concern? That's, that's it for me.
Don, do you have anything?
No, Veronica asked the questions that I actually, some of the questions I was going to ask. I do have a problem with family member working for another family member, but as long as supervision is being handled elsewhere, I don't have a problem.
Okay, Jim, I would like to put this in a further discussion at a future meeting for policy on that, because we don't have one. So if you can make a note of that, please.
I guess, my
I'd also, I'm sorry, Rock, I have one more thing. I'd also like a procedure on job postings. Obviously, posting on the board is, that's from the 1930s. I'd like a, a list of places where we could advertise open positions for, for municipal jobs. I know we use MMA, but there's 50,000 free ones out there right now, so.
I guess what I'd like to do is repost the position, he's in the job temporarily right now, correct?
Correct.
I'm trying to understand how supervision happens without a supervisor being present at the site ever. So I guess I'd like clarification on that. So repost the position, re-interview, he's still there temporarily, keep him there temporarily. I assume that you are the one supervising currently, is that true, Jim?
As I said moments ago, administratively, I sign payroll. If there are issues or questions, he would come to me, but I do not do any direct supervision anymore than
Who writes reviews?
We had that issue come up recently when this position became vacant, the question was asked, and again, I would defer to Linda, because she was part of the discussion with the Board of Health, asking who did the reviews for these employees. I mean, it, it, this highlights a problem, obviously. If we go forward with family members in the recycling attendance positions, we're going to need a better process on day-to-day hands-on supervision and evaluations. We don't have that right now. And I think that's what Linda was going toward in her letter that she sent to the board a couple of weeks ago now, which will likely be on your first meeting after town meeting. A discussion about looking at the, when the Commonwealth did did a study on whether or not there's any value in looking at an overall Department of Public Works. Perhaps not going as far as that report went, and again, I don't want to speak for Linda, but maybe taking the recycling component.
Well, at this point, Jim, since that's a topic for our next meeting, I, I think since he's in the temporary position as it is right now, tabling this to our next regular meeting would be prudent at this point. I don't know if the other board members feel that way.
I would agree with that.
Because I want to look at policy too. This, as Jim just stated, this create highlights a hole that we have to, to plug, so I think that'd be the best course of the action for the, the board tonight.
Got it. I agree too, but I think Linda should answer the question, who, who's been writing the reviews now?
Yeah, Linda, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I, I did ask Carla that question, and the response was the previous chair signed her, Brian, who's her other son's, performance review from 2018 to 2019. We were in the process of reviewing 2019, 2020, when COVID started. At that time, it would have been Jimmy Latina performed the review for Brian in the chair to sign off as department head. Jimmy was the one that vacated the recycling, recycling to, recycling attendant to position. He has, he has the hoisting license, so the appointment is to hire, was posted as attendant two, but appears that, you know, they're hiring as attendant one with the intention of having Brian, who's the attendant one, get his hoisting license and become a step up, however that works internally. I'm not, but that's, that's what I got for an answer. Perform, performance reviews prior to this were the discretion of the Board of Health and Town Administrator, was the response I got. So Jimmy was a coworker doing the review on the board, the board members chair signing off.
So Jim, do we need to motion the table, or?
No, no, you're good, just by not taking me, well, you do have a motion, you have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, so I guess voting down the motion, and then just moving, taking no action beyond that and moving to the next agenda item.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Don Klein, no.
Veronica Kell, no.
Wayne Miller, no, and we'll table to the next regular scheduled meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Linda. 2.3, appoint Jane O'Hara as registrar for a three-year term, can I get a motion there, please?
I move that we appoint Jane O'Hara as a registrar for a three-year term effective March 31st, 2020 to March 31st, 2023. And I assume that that status because of COVID.
Correct.
And can I get a second, Don?
Second.
Any discussion here?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 2-4, appoint Carol Huffses as associate member of the Town and Planning Board, can I get a motion there, please?
I, I think I'm going to recuse myself from this because I am still currently on the planning board.
Understood, so Don, can I get a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we reappoint Carol Hoxsey as the associate member to the Townsend Planning Board effective July 21st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Now, second that, so I assume the planning board is voted on this as well?
Yes, they did, at the last meeting.
Okay, Don, any questions, comments?
No.
I don't either, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, meeting business, 3.1, discuss, discussion regarding economic ramifications of families and government services, I understand there's a private citizen that wrote something to the board?
There is, Jim, we, we have a couple of private citizens that are on, and I don't know if they are this person. So I guess if, if either private citizen or galaxy note nine is Josh Shane, just raise your hand and we can get you into the discussion, but there is a an email that's in your packets from members of the board, Jared, should I just read it into the record so people know what this is about?
Yes, please.
It says, as you know, I'm a former member of the Finance Committee and Capital Planning as well as the Board of Library Trustees. In addition, I work in education in a variety of capacities, including the homeschool community. In conversation with a variety of people, as well as reading both public reports and private, it's become clear to me that a number of students who will be returning to our public schools on a full-time basis is going to be substantially reduced. By our, in quotes, I mean both North Middlesex Regional Schools and the broader public schools. The problem, though, does not stop with the schools. With more children staying home, more parents are going to have to stay home too. That means fewer folks working, resulting in less income, and consequently, a sharp reduction in too many families' ability to pay their real estate taxes. I'm sure that some of this is already under discussion, if not all of it, but there is no visible plan for how we Townsend, North Middlesex Regional, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are going to deal with the economic ramifications on either the families or our governmental service and employees. Even the planning frameworks, in quotes, for reopening the schools that some states and municipalities have put out are both vague and lacking consideration of these ripples. I'm not writing to propose a solution, I wish I had one, but I'm writing to request that this conversation either get going or perhaps expand to include the fuller picture. I'm willing to participate if that's useful, but I'm not seeking such a position. It just seems fair if I'm going to raise the question that I should at least offer. Sincerely, Josh Shane.
I can comment a little bit on that. Just because I've been on a couple of meetings with Brad Morgan, the superintendent on this. We're really kind of at the mercy of the state for this one, in the Department of Education and the teachers union, until there's a decision made. I, I see the three proposals that are out there. They all stink to some degree. And there are going to be ramifications from them, and I think we need to, I'm hoping to make a decision sooner than later. I, I don't have an answer, I don't think anybody would for this, this situation, just because it raises a broader picture of, you know, families and welfare and, and what we can do, so. I, I think, I believe Brad has a task force set up for the reopening of schools. I know a number of Townsend residents had offered assistance, I think they got a ton more responses than they expected to do it, and I know several people are not happy that they got left off, which, you know, that, that's going to happen when you volunteer for a committee like that. But I, I agree. I don't know where to start beyond that. But I think the discussion needs to be ongoing as we find out what state aid we're going to get, what the school opening is going to look like. It's just, we're just not there yet. We just don't know if we're going to, I don't think anybody knows the next steps beyond phase 3.1, whatever we're in right now.
Would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, do you think, for me to forward Mr. Shane's email to Brad?
Yes, absolutely.
Brad, reach out and just let him know what they've got going to date, and maybe there's a way that Mr. Shane can interface with that ongoing group.
Yeah, there hasn't, he hasn't had a, what he calls them, a quote-unquote coffee with the super in quite a few weeks, so I would, I would put that as an update for the, the greater North Middlesex community to get an update from them, because I haven't seen one, I don't know if anybody else has, but it, it's been some time now.
Okay.
I think it's more than just the school, the schools too, I mean, people have younger kids that aren't in schools, what do you do with them? I, I think that the schools is a good place to start, but I think that it's also a broader conversation to be had at some point.
It, it's going to be, and that depends on the daycare situation as well, because right now, but I think they're still only open at a very limited capacity and
Yeah, I attended a council on aging meeting this morning, and I know that grandparents think they believe that they will be called into service. Grandparents called into service, because what Josh says is a problem. And I, I don't know what that's going to do.
Yeah, as a town government, I don't know if we have too much say in what we can do with that, but I certainly would like to have the conversations. Don, anything on that?
No, I, outside of the fact that both the state and the federal government haven't come to a decision on how they're going to fund things, I, I don't know what we can do from a local level outside of what Brad's already started.
No, I don't either.
The hard thing is the, the social distancing, I think if it wasn't for the social distancing piece to all this, there's probably a lot of co-op kind of things that you could think about putting together to help people out so they can get to their jobs, et cetera, et cetera. But it's really hard to do that when you can't really be where a lot of people are, so same issue as the schools for everything, so. Definitely, we should keep on the radar.
Yep, so Jim, if you could just rehash out to Brad and start that conversation?
You got it.
Okay. 3-2, review, approve 112 budget for August if needed, Jim?
Yes. We do have our town meeting scheduled for this coming Saturday, which, all things considered, will go well, and we'll have a budget in place, and this won't be necessary. On the off chance that we have a meeting and don't come up with a budget, or potentially aren't able to have the meeting, we're required to have a 112 budget in hand for the month of August, so the town accountant has put together the August 112 budget, and the numbers would be in total, inclusive of Water Enterprise, That would be the 112 budget for the month of August 2020, so a motion to approve and submit to DOR the August 112 budget in that amount would be in order.
If necessary, or?
If we have a budget, this won't be necessary, so I think just having it, it becomes unnecessary if we do vote a budget, so.
Okay, so that supersedes whatever we vote on.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I get a motion then, please?
I'm, I move that we approve a 112 budget for August.
In the amount?
If needed, in the amount.
In the amount of, yep.
The amount of $2,122,321.06.
Indeed.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Jim, so just a what-if scenario?
Yes.
If we don't get a quorum, we don't have town meeting, or we, the budget gets voted down, this is something we're going to have to do every month for the remainder of, till we have a true second budget.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you still talking, Wayne?
No, I'm trying to swat the bugs that's in front of me right now, sorry.
Does this budget include the amount that water was questioning in case, because of that water main break on Main Street, in case they would have an emergency that needed to be covered? Did that get covered in here? I guess, Jim?
I'm looking at the number that Lori put together for the Water Enterprise budget, and she advises me today that it exceeds that which was being asked for. Now, DOR has asked that, for reasons that neither Lori or I understand, DOR has asked that we take this 112 number to an extreme, to include revolving accounts and and, and other funds that you normally would have as a part of your operating budget. So this is, it's a larger number than the water department would otherwise be asking for, so.
So
All things considered.
In theory, it is.
In theory, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don, any questions? Don, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, uh, ready to vote. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica tell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Three, three, or review approve sign a three-year contract with Weston Sampson Engineers for environmental monitoring and reporting. Uh, can I get a motion on that, please?
Um, I move that we approve and sign. Well, review approve and sign a three-year contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers. For environmental monitoring and reporting for an approximate twelve acre parcel with an onsite. We take treatment facility.
And to sign out of session if you could.
Um, and to sign out of session.
Okay, Don, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, this, I assume is the, for the, the dump, monitoring, just continuing.
Be Jake, correct.
So we, this is required, correct, by the state?
We have a requirement from the state to do this, correct?
Okay.
Is this what is in the budget as landfill engineering?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Don, any questions?
No, familiar with this.
Okay, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica tell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Three, four, review discuss addendum to the contract for McEnroe Consulting for Engineering Services. Can I get a motion, please?
Um, I move that. This doesn't, I ask a question, this doesn't say approve, sign, it just says discuss and review. Um, do we need to do more than that?
No, no, I mean, and and approve is fine. It does say votes may be taken at the top of the section, so you should be fine.
Okay, so I'm, I move that we approve an addendum to the contract for McEnroe Consulting LLC for Engineering Services.
And can I get a second?
Okay.
Um, Jim, a little background.
Yes, um, this would be addendum number three. It's, there's a document in your packets that has the standard form town contract and. The each of the the first two addendums, addenda.
Yep.
This is the contract for engineering service are extended to September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And not to exceed a total of seventy additional hours or an additional ten thousand dollars for a total not to exceed three thousand eight.
We just freeze. Is that me?
Yep, you're frozen.
There are.
I froze, I think.
Yep, you did.
You did, but you're back.
Okay, good. So could you repeat that? Extend to September thirty?
September thirtieth. And not to exceed a total of seventy additional hours or an additional ten thousand dollars. For a total not to exceed fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that's page seven in your document in your packet.
Okay.
Does that have to be part of the motion, or is it okay?
That would be, that would be the motion. That is the extension that you're doing to ju- to September thirtieth.
So do I need to redo the motion because I just said to approve an addendum?
Yeah, and the addendum is these details. You do need the details of the addendum.
Okay.
So just amend that.
Yep.
Do I need to say words, or are we good with this?
Um, you you can say as as presented in addendum number three. That's fine.
Alright, so I move that we approve the contract for McEnroe Consulting. As described in addendum number three.
Perfect. Second.
Don Klein, second.
Sorry, um, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica tell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Three, five, acknowledge the resignation of Conservation Commissioner Michael Turgeron. You don't need any, this is just an acknowledgement of his resignation, Jim.
It is, and Veronica and I have talked about this a little bit, um, in terms, the interplay between a resignation. Being offered and notice being given to the appointing authority that then starts a thirty-day clock. Under the charter. So I had intended to bring my copy of the charter downstairs with me tonight, but I don't have it. So Veronica, do you wanna just chat with me about this for a quick second, what your, what your understanding was? Because I know we had some discussion about it on Thursday last week.
Um, what you had told me was that once all three of us had um, initialled the resignation. That that would be when the clock started, as far as the appointment timeframe went.
Okay, and and right, right now, you officially in a public session received it, so that even trumps. The the initialing of of a document, but I I do want to just try to find the section on notice vacancies, if you can bear with me.
I think I remember it pretty good from last year. It was notice, and then it starts the clock for us to have thirty days to fill the position. Otherwise, it gets um, kicked back to the. The board, respective board, to find an appoint a replacement.
Um, which, which right now has no chair and no administrator and no land use coordinator. Um, I believe there are probably also reappointments to the conscom that need to be made for terms that are up. In this fiscal year. So I think we should look into that as well.
So it it does read in seven, nine. Sub F of the charter. Filling of vacancies whenever a vacancy shall occur in the membership of an appointed multiple member body, the remaining members shall forthwith give written notice of such vacancy. To the appointing authority. If at the expiration of thirty days following delivery of such notice, the appointing authority has not appointed some person to fill the vacancy. The remaining members shall fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term. So it's actually not so split hairs, but you have not yet received notice from the remaining members of. The Conservation Commission of the vacancy. So technically, your clock doesn't even start with you having acknowledged receipt of this resignation when you follow the express language of the charter.
I agree with you, Jim.
Okay.
That, um, and when we are notified, that's when it starts.
That's when the clock starts.
Um, that said, I think there are three vacancies on that committee now, at least. I'm not certain, and so I think we should. Uh, ask Kathy maybe to put a notice up on the posting board so that volunteer, you know. People can put in volunteer response forms if they're so inclined. Uh, for conservation.
Yep, Jim, can you take care of that with her?
Yep, Kathy is here with us. So she's, she's hearing that as well.
Oh, I I can uh, put it up, but I need the notice from conservation, wouldn't I?
Why don't we chase, why don't we chase, yeah, we'll chase that tomorrow.
Okay.
Regardless, conservation does need to meet in order to notice the board of selectmen as the appointing authority of the vacancy, so. We can chase that detail tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, guys. Alright, three, six, discussion, shared streets and spaces grants.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a a grant opportunity that came up with a pretty quick turnaround time. Reflective of some of the COVID funds that the federal government trickled down to the states and an effort by the state to get. The money deployed rather quickly, so um, working with Beth, who has been an absolute treat to work with on this. Just kind of tried to sketch out what we could do quickly. And that wouldn't involve the requirement for purchasing land that can take time or town meeting actions, which which take time. So looking at the parcel of land behind the town hall parking lot, the grass lot that serves as overflow parking during elections and town meetings. And looking at the parcel of land the town owns, the dirt parcel over near the rail trestle. Right at the the juncture of um, Riverbank Terrace. Also behind the town hall. The idea was to to just brainstorm around what could be done with those two parcels, and it turns out that there is a. Connecting parcel that is privately owned right now. I think the the value, the assessed value is six hundred dollars. I've spoken to the owner. He's inclined to transfer ownership to the town for that same consideration, you know, the six hundred dollars. Which would provide an opportunity to do something on the lot behind town hall and then have the connecting piece. To the the trestle parcel. The grant application is looking for something that contributes to commerce. Contributes to social distancing and 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 wellness, particularly something outdoor. Food security. And exercise. So the thought, again, just brainstorming with Beth and and working with. Working with the 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 technical folks that um, had been working on the M V P grant. The idea would be to create a combination of some parking and perhaps farmer's market space. On the lot behind town hall, potentially incorporate an exercise component. Now, there had been some discussion in the past about an exercise pad from the Recreation Commission. So whether it's that or some other variant of that, having some exercise component there. And then on the lot across the street, the the trestle lot, to create community garden space. And some landscape additional parking and landscaped area along the riverbank itself with some benches. The idea is the connectivity between the the active rail trail use. And the town hall and being able to also with the parking provide the benefit of overflow parking. For either the ice cream factory or cliffs. You know, if there were ever a discussion that involved cliffs needing additional parking than that, that they currently enjoy. Uh, more than that, that they currently enjoy, this would be an opportunity for them to have that additional parking, so. This is kind of the best shot that we could come up with where we could move quickly on something that we've had. We've been kicking around these ideas over the last couple of years, anyway. The type of pavement would be pervious. It's basically, uh, it's a honeycomb. Um, it's a rigid honeycomb that is filled with gravel, so you get. You you don't have any sheet flow, you don't have any stormwater issues, you're getting the same percolation that you would get, all things considered. If it were left uh, as nat- in its natural state. Um, that rain gardens installed as part of the landscaping to do some additional processing and filtration of the water. So that's kind of the the ten thousand foot view. There's a document in your packets under three, six, that shows some of the the graphics and some of the maps. And then a couple of schematics put together.
I I do have a question and a suggestion, so I'll do the question first, since this is across the street from thirteen. Which I understand is where the rail trail ends, if that's correct.
Yep.
Don, I think that's correct.
Yeah, it it ends um, where the uh, the old grain store used to be. By the uh, storage facilities.
Okay.
They're not crossing thirteen because they ran into problems with uh, the Department of Transportation having traffic. Things done in that area, so they're ending prior.
Well, my suggestion then is to have the uh, a crosswalk with the flashing lights, much like we've talked about with stair light in the past. To push for that, if that's something we can add to this.
It's a great, great call.
I I agree with that.
Cause I really hate seeing Groton get all those, and we can't even get one. Drives me a little bit nuts.
Um, yeah, that would be a good place for a crosswalk.
Yeah, and I I think it, that adds to the parking piece of the rail trail and allows access. A measure of safety, so.
The other thing I was wondering is, uh, as far as outdoors seating, can we, uh, can we outdoor dining and outdoor seating? Can we do anything at all to enhance Cliff's outdoor seating and um, outdoor seating for the ice cream factory?
Right, the the difficulty with cliffs is its state highway layout, so the sidewalk and the roadway are state. So when you're looking at a grant opportunity like this that is meant to be able to to hit the ground quickly and be able to get deployed. That's inconsistent with having to deal with the state. Nice, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But um, I mean, I go to those M J T C meetings, and the last meeting I was at, they were really pushing this. And the state seemed to be in favor of this, so I'm wondering. If maybe, I don't know, it might be something to look at. It's great. I'm really, really glad to see that the town is, has, you know, um, been working on this. I think it's great.
Yeah, I think if we did, in the, in the space that we have out back, if we had some tables worked into that. Um, that does provide overflow if people wanted to come, you know, get their, get takeout, come sit and eat in that lot while their kids are playing on whatever. This exercise space is, or um, you know, there's a farmer's market component on Saturday. And tables for people to actually sit and eat something, some fruit they just got at the farmer's market. I think there's a way to roll all of that in. In terms of working on the the actual sidewalk on one nineteen, particularly when that intersection was just redone. Within the last four years, I think, they they recurbed and and. New concrete down for the sidewalks at the intersection. I just think that that, that will drag things backwards.
Yep, um, the other thing they talked about was an ADA, and again, I can't remember the acronym. P R O W plan. Um, P R O W was the, we have an ADA plan?
We do, we do, I'm just not familiar with.
Anything in there, and so I was thinking about the sidewalks in the common, could that be rolled in? Um, and could be.
It's already funded.
Place and walking.
Yep, the uh, the sidewalks in the commons are already funded. We do have um, Rogers working diligently on that. Roger Repose of the. Cemetery, parts of cemetery superintendent, so we do have those funds in hand. He does have the bids, so they should be going out. Anytime for that, so that's already covered.
Okay.
I guess I just keep working on this. Um, I appreciate the work Beth has done on this, Todd, thank you for us.
Absolutely.
Do you have a target timeline for a submittal? I know they all have to be in by the end of September.
Yes, they've actually already made the first round of awards too. It just came out yesterday. So um, hoping by your next meeting, which would either be a a week from now or two weeks from now, depending on what you're. What you're gonna say at the end of this meeting in terms of when you want to meet next. So, yes, it it, there's not a lot of money in this grant overall, and a million of it's already gone, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Don?
Veronica?
No.
Okay. Three, seven, review discussion on road safety audits.
Um, this, I'll go ahead and talk to this, Jim, if that's okay. Cause this is again an outcropping from M J T C. Uh, which, by the way, I'm gonna throw in right now that um, we have to look at appointments to that because the appointments are now. And I know Brad Harris sent out a note which you probably saw.
Yep.
Um, so road safety audits, Townsend has had one done since two thousand and six. And this is to um, look at places where there might be a lot of accidents and things like that. And so the the two places I was thinking of, one of them is not necessarily in Townsend. It's where Proctor Road hits one nineteen. The see if that could be looked at, maybe in conjunction with the intersection at the high school at Harbor Village. And then also, of course, Sterilite. I don't, we talked briefly about that before.
Well, I I'll, I can speak to that one.
So those are the cool places that I had in mind for this, but there could be others, but I think we should um, consider. Requesting a road safety audits or whatever we think we should.
Okay. To the Sterilite point, I just talked to the G M from Sterilite actually about an hour and a half ago. I had met with them, I I was pushing for this last year. To see if we could facilitate it with the state to do something exactly like what you're talking about here. They came back and said, thank you, um, we're gonna do it ourselves, we'll privately fund it, so we're we're trying to get the the permitting process done, which has been the. Roadblock on that one, so they've committed to doing it. It's just getting the state to give us a permit to do it.
They being Sterilite?
Sterilite wants to do it, they want nothing to town have.
When you say they want to do it, do you mean?
They wanna pay for it, pay for it, pay for it and install.
Not the traffic count. They want to actually install the the the. Not the traffic count. They want to actually install the the blinking pedestrian crossing lights. And on that point, Mr. Chairman, I I saw an email chain. Just yesterday. That Jim Smith, our Highway Superintendent, is involved in, and he's trying to to bird dog this thing and find out why. What the holdup is, and they came back, the state came back, asked DOT with a list of three things that they're still waiting for. In order to be able to issue the permit, so Jim is on that. He's he's reaching out to the contact at Sterlite to make certain that. They know that these are the things that the state is still waiting on.
Yep, and that's the bug I put in his ear tonight.
Awesome.
So what about the other intersection? Do we want to go forward with that, the Proctor Road?
At least have the discussion with with Pepperell, because I think we need to do it with them. I don't think we can request it ourselves.
I thought that Pepperell, it's either Pepperell or Groton because they all. I I thought they did a study maybe. Two or three years ago, because I know there were people out there doing traffic counts.
It's not on the roadway safety audit list that MJTC can forward that list.
So Jim, can you follow up with Pepperell and Groton to see what they have on that?
Do you want to take a vote to authorize the submittal of a request for a road safety? Traffic audit and Veronica and I can work on this offline and. Find if if Proctor Road intersection has already been done, then find where that data is and then. Move on to your second choice, but just.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea because it may not be that it's in Townsend. It may have been in one of the other towns.
Sure.
So those are state roads anyway, so if I can get a motion, please, Veronica.
I move that. We authorize Jim to look at Pepperell and Groton, talk to Pepperell and Groton and see where. Where they stand with the, as far as the roadway safety audit goes with for the Proctor Road intersection.
And further work with you to submit. A request either. One or your next second choice as the the town's representative.
My my second choice was the Sterlite, and it sounds like that's already. Under control, right?
I I don't think they're they're going to be asking for the data. They're just going to do the work.
They know they need it, so it's kind of a moot point to do a study.
Yeah, so if they're doing the work, we don't need the study. So it would just be to look and see where they can stand with Pepperell and Groton and Townsend and.
And we'll come back after that.
Yeah, so let's see if we need to submit for a roadway safety audit if in fact there is not one in the system.
Gotcha.
Okay. All that in a second, Don?
I I seconded.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Wayne Miller, yes. Three eight, discussion, Safe Roots to School Program. I assume that's kind of a. Offshoot of this.
Well, it's it's actually, if you look at the. Shared streets and spaces, the if you're part of the Safe Routes to School Program, that's one of the things that you could fund. Through that grant in 2.6, but in any event. This is something, and again, this stems from me attending those meetings. Since I was the Townsend person that's been attending, I was contacted by. The person who manages the Safe Routes to School Program. And. I did talk to the planning board about it and they they voted to. Put together, I have a suggested committee. And I was going to talk to the police chief about this as well later this week. But I I would want to, I'm not sure who's who is currently on the school committee right now for Townsend, but. Someone from the school committee, highway and police, the principals at the schools and the PTO. This is not for the high school. It's really K A. The Rec Committee and then the Board of Selectmen need to be on board. But if you look at like the fourth page in or the second to the last page, it's kind of the ranking sheet for if you're applying for grants. So you saw the principals of the schools sign on to the program. And the purpose is to educate the. The children about walking to school and or biking to school. It's to both. Help them understand how to safely do that and also to allow for an element of exercise for everybody. You can also do. Moving school buses, walking school buses where parents drive to one location. And then walk with the kids to school, so you could potentially park in the parking lot back behind the library that we've been talking about. And then walk the kids to Spalding or walk them up to Hawthorne Brook. So the the first year, the Safe Routes to School Program works with the schools and they do. Some sort of assembly and in this time of COVID, I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like. And a bicycle safety assembly as well, so I'm not sure exactly what they're thinking of, but there is a. Online meeting, I think it's next week about all this. And then you you look at, you know, there are other things that you do, assessments, how many kids bike? What happens at dismissal time, those sorts of things. So that's the two points, three points. There are all these things that you can do as the school and the schools determine. What all they want, if they want to participate and then what all they want to participate in, what makes sense for their community. And anyway. So that would be the first year of the program. After you've participated in these assemblies, then the community is eligible to apply for grants. To. Enhance crosswalks or different routes to school. You know, things, safety features that you might need for the kids to be safe, whether it's bike lanes or, you know. Police monitoring of paths through the woods or whatever it might be. Those sorts of things, so that's what it is.
Okay.
So what I need from you guys is okay to go forward as well. And see what I can do as far as organizing this and then handing it off to a committee of some sort.
I would I would keep exploring. I don't think we have enough information to to necessarily vote on anything, Jim.
I I think. I don't want to speak for Veronica. I think she's just looking for your buy-in conceptually.
Yeah. Yes, you want to do it.
I can put together to talk to the school principals. You know, are we in on this or we're not? If it doesn't have Board of Selectmen's support. At least as far as the second year goes. You know, they can do all the safety pieces with the kids, but as far as any sort of. You know, infrastructure isn't the right word, but any sort of things that could be applied. You know, funding, that would need the Board of Selectmen to sign on.
Yep, I I fully support you going forward with this and taking a look and, you know, coming up with a proposal. Depending on where we are in six months.
Right, yeah.
I'm in support of it too, Veronica.
Okay, then I will continue my talking and seeing if I can form a committee and let you know in August where we stand.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that. Great, four work sessions, town administrator updates, reports, Jim, all you.
Yes, 4.11 in the packet on the agenda says fiscal year 21 budget update. I've put together the budget packet and I'm going to do a share screen here. Just so folks can follow along. Bear with me while I figure it out. Right. This. This document is the. It's a it's an abbreviated version of what we've had over the last couple of years, given the abbreviated. Timeframe that we're working under. But just to go through, just to meet all of the the checkmarks we need to have in all the boxes. You've got the fiscal year 21 town meeting and budget book. It contains especially annual town meeting warrants, the fiscal 21 budget and the fiscal 21 capital plan. You got moderator, board of selectmen and town administrator. I'm required to have a budget memorandum, so this would be that budget memorandum, and I do think it would be helpful. To be able to read it into the record for those that are following at home and will be watching online. And this will be up on the website tonight as well. But. Dear taxpaying and voting citizens of the town of Townsend, this is my fifth full budget cycle working for you, the taxpaying citizens of the town of Townsend. I'm proud to say that as a result of another year of the leadership of your Board of Selectmen, the discipline of your finance committee and the hard work of your public employees, we are in a strong financial position. We made tremendous progress over the past four years and our fiscal house is all the better for it. Process utilized in the creation of the fiscal 21 budget before you for your consideration at this town meeting was significantly more inclusive of members of both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee this year. Unlike in prior years, their involvement was limited entirely to the review of the budget after it hadn't been created by staff. This year, both bodies were on the ground floor. Then everything came to a screeching halt in March with the onset of COVID-19. As we began reopening the government, your select board voted to put the annual town meet. Excuse me, to put the annual town meeting, which is usually held in May, off until July in an effort to allow. Us to adapt to the new realities under COVID-19 and to allow for the state to pass a budget thereby providing us with badly needed data upon which to base our fiscal 21 budget. We are addressing COVID-19 well, but the state has yet to pass a budget. Accordingly, it needs to be understood that fiscal 21 budget before you for your consideration today is as accurate and fair a budget as we can be expected to develop and deliver, given the lack of definitive action by the state. Having said that, please do expect that we will be back revisiting this budget sometime later in the fall or early winter. As we come to have a more concrete sense of our overall finances. In this fiscal 21 budget, we have yet again, for the fifth year in a row now, managed to avoid the prior practice of the town having. Relyed upon one-time revenue sources to fund our ongoing obligations. The prior practice, which is akin to paying your recurring bills with your limited savings, is counter to all best practices in municipal management. Your select board and finance committee are to be commended in this, and I'm both proud and pleased to have played a role in breaking that cycle. Balanced budget. As has always been the case, our objectives in this budget process were simple. Under the terms of the town bylaws and the town charter, we're obligated to prepare and present a balanced budget, and we do. And tonight we have done so. The obvious question remains, how did we do it? It's quite simple. We are in this better position as a direct result of the manner in which your elected officials, appointed officials, municipal employees, both in management and on the front lines of service delivery have conducted themselves on your behalf. What is in the budget? First and foremost, this budget that we are presenting this evening is in true balance as is required to be. This fiscal year 21 budget is one and one-half percent higher than the fiscal 20 budget. Much more informative, however, is the fact that this fiscal 21 budget. Education expenses are increased by $583,758. But the bottom line of the budget is only up by $387,155. That means in order to come into balance, we had to reduce the non-school budget by approximately $200,000 from last year. This is the fourth year in a row where our assessment from North Middlesex Regional School District has increased by $500,000. To put this in perspective, we can raise just slightly more than $500,000 in new revenue each year. Which means nearly every new dollar of revenue we raise goes directly to funding education with nothing left for public safety, public works and public administration. This is not a sustainable pattern, and we, all three communities that comprise the North Middlesex Regional School District. Must work earlier and harder with the leadership of the school district to find a way to break this cycle. I'd like to close by offering my sincere thanks to each of the members of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Finance Team, Town Accountant, Treasurer, Collector and Assessor. As well as the general government managers and employees that have contributed to the solution that is this balanced fiscal 21 budget. After the budget memo, we get into a special town meeting warrant, which you are all familiar with. We then get into the annual town meeting. Budget, excuse me, warrant article. And we have our data charts and then the budget itself begins. This is the omnibus version of the budget, so this is, as you can see, department, personnel and expenses in total. Department personnel expenses in total. As you move your way down in this budget, you will see. You get to the functional segments. So. Total general government you see in black with an asterisk next to it. That's the number of the town meeting votes, the total general government budget. Next, you would get to the total public safety budget. Again, appearing in black with an asterisk. Then you have the total education budget. Again. Black with an asterisk. Total streets and highways. Total solid waste. Moving further down, total human services. Total culture and recreation, total debt. Total insurances and then the grand total. Now. If we go back to the top of this article. You'll see. That. Goodness gracious. So under description, it says, this is the usual and customary town budget for next fiscal year fiscal 21, which began on Jul- July 1, 2020. As has been customary, you will be voting by the total for each of the following functional segments. And those are the ones that appear later in the document that we just went over, general government, public safety, education, streets and highways, solid waste, human services, culture and recreation, debt service and insurances. And then the grand total. The totals for each functional segment as shown in the chart above also appear with asterisks in the 21 omnibus shown below, so. That's what gets voted on. There is a note here, however. Note, a more detailed line item budget is available for informational purposes only, beginning on page 33 of this packet. So this goes to. The. Folks that like to see. A little bit more detail, so we get to. The end of the warrant. Again, these are all the articles that you've already approved. And we get to the fiscal 21 line item budget. The following fiscal 21 line item budget is being provided for informational purposes only. As is usual and customary, the vote at annual town meeting will be based upon the totals for each of the traditional functional segments. Repetitious, absolutely, but just making certain that people understand. That this is information at a deeper dive. Line item by line item, but what's being voted is what you see up above in the actual warrant article. So as you go down this, you're going to see actual. Department account number, account name, the FY18 approved, 19 approved, 20 approved, and then the recommended. And notes where there are notes being called for. So this is the line item budget, and this goes on for a great number of pages. And. You get to the end of the packet. Which says end. So. This is what will be created as a handout. For everybody coming into town meeting. It'll be available online as of tonight. And we'll have hard copies at the library, senior center, town clerk's office and. At the selectmen's office. Between now and Saturday. So given that. Any comments, questions, recommendations for changes between now and tonight when I. Finalize it?
The only thing I'd ask is if we have the the usual Board of Finance approved deny otherwise.
Yeah, we don't as of yet. I would, I'll imagine that we're going to end up with a separate. A separate document we're going to have to have as this as a.
I'm I'm fine with that, so I I don't have any issue with as presented, so. Anybody else?
When you say you're going to have them hard copy at the library, the senior center, et cetera, et cetera, is that for people to pick up? They can go there to pick up a copy of this.
Yep. Yes, and we would we would ask if you do pick one up, please bring it with you when you come to town meeting. You know, obviously, we don't want to be making them, you know, this is, what is it, eighty-five pages? You know, we don't want to be making them necessarily. So if you, if you do grab one, please bring it with you to town meeting and don't, you know, rely on grabbing another one when you come into the town meeting.
So another question then is, if people want to make changes in this budget, can they?
The moderator ultimately makes the call on any motion on the floor of a town meeting. So if somebody wants to craft a motion to make a change, ultimately, that motion will be ruled on by the moderator. So to go back to the actual warrant article. So, for instance, if you look at the way it has been done, at least since I've been here, is the moderator will when we get to this article, somebody will move the budget as presented. And then the moderator will say, does anybody have any question on or like to discuss any items in the general government functional segment? And if somebody raises their hand, you know, he'll make a note of that, and we'll go through each of the functional segments and address any of the concerns or questions that are raised by anybody in the audience. If during that process, somebody says, not only do I have a question, but I think we should not be spending seventy-five dollars on that widget, and I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget. I would, at that point, defer to council who will be in attendance because the board of selectmen set a budget as a matter of its policy. Its largest policy statement is its budget. So if somebody says on the floor, I want to cut that seventy-five dollars for that widget, and it's seconded, and somebody and at the end of the, the discussion, there is a vote and it passes, that functional segment where that seventy-five dollar expense for that widget will be reduced by seventy-five dollars. That does not mean that the widget is going to be removed. It just means that that functional segment has seventy-five dollars less, and town meeting has expressed itself as saying, we don't think that widget should be purchased. It doesn't bind or obligate the board of selectmen to not buy that widget. So that's, that's what, it gets really, really important that people understand that you, you can, you can make that, that recommendation from the floor of town meeting and get a vote. But ultimately, the selectmen are the ones that will determine where that cut from that functional segment will be taken. Does that make sense?
Yes. Or the, an addition. So say someone wants to fund a position that currently is not being funded, that was funded in prior time.
Somebody hypothetically, the land use, hypothetically, the land use coordinator, if somebody wanted to make a motion in the land use budget in the functional segment for general government to increase the land use coordinator line by forty-five thousand dollars such that it is funded at last year's level. In order for that to have effect, they would need to identify a funding source, which means cutting someplace else or identifying that there are other funds that are otherwise available that haven't been taken into consideration. Because otherwise, you would have a budget at the end of that vote that was out of balance.
Okay, so I have a question on that. You said that we only had a one and a half percent increase in our, in the budget.
Bottom line budget, correct.
Correct. So does that directly correlate to an increase in property taxes by one and a half percent?
It does not. Property tax, and I can actually pull up the budget workbook that has all of the tabs and go to the property tax section if you, if you think that this might be.
No, no, this is more for my understanding.
Sure. Property tax is just one of the revenue sources we have for our budget.
So there are
It's the largest, but we also have state aid and other available funds and local receipts. So if property tax goes up two and a half percent, but it only reflects seventy-five percent of our total budget, and everything else went down.
We can figure out the math.
Right.
Okay. But somebody could do that. And then it would be our job to figure out where we were getting that money from, if it were.
Um, well, I would, I would, I would defer to the moderator and town council as to how they would choose to handle a motion that seeks with a balanced budget to increase a line item without identifying a corresponding cut someplace else or another revenue source being added to the mix. Because I'm sorry.
Does that cut have to be in the same segment of government or in the same black line? Or could that cut be in a different black line?
Uh, it could be a different, a different line, a different functional segment, because you are voting ultimately on the bottom total general government budget. So again, I, I would, I would defer to how the moderator would want to handle that. At the end of the day, we need to have a balanced budget. Now, could the moderator say, I think it is in order for you to have made a motion to increase that line item by forty-five thousand without identifying another source or cutting elsewhere, resulting in a budget that is out of balance? He could, he could rule that in order. And at the end of the day, if that stands, we would have to go back to a town meeting and figure out how to come back into balance. So again, that would be really a judgment call for the moderator, and I would imagine consultation with town council. You look puzzled.
No, not puzzled.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good with it, Jim. I think this is fine.
It is, um, it is as has been voted. So we, we, we have what we have, and we'll see where we go, you know? God willing, we get seventy-five hearty souls to come out in nine AM, eighty-degree weather this coming Saturday. So.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Yep. Next.
Next, town meeting schematics. You have in your packets an overview of the library senior center on Google Earth, and it shows in, in a graphical representation how we would be moving forward with holding this town meeting outside in the senior center side parking lot. So what you basically would see is cars coming in off of Brookline as they would normally be coming in to the library and senior center. As they make the right into the driveway entering the library senior center, they would be directed to park in the section of the parking lot that is the library side of the parking lot. And it will be marked and it will be roped is the wrong word, but taped in, in such a fashion that people recognize that this is the area for parking. The driveway into the senior center side, which is on the bottom of your document, you'll see that there is a check-in station there for the, the, the checkers for the the, the checkers and the registrars to make certain that everybody coming in is a registered voter. There would also be a water station there. Bottles of water available for people to take. When you move into the senior center parking lot, every other parking space will be blocked off such that there's six feet space between people. You can get into a parking space. We will have chairs available. I know we previously talked about people bringing their own or blankets. They still can if they'd like. But on the off chance that people didn't get the memo that they were required to bring a chair, better safe than sorry, so we're going to have chairs on site. If it's a family or if it's a group of people that have during COVID been close in contact with one another, they're free to get into a parking space as a group. If they're not, then the protocol would call that they socially distance by themselves in a parking space. It's going to be interesting to, to see how this all plays out. I have faith that it will go well. In the middle of the parking lot, between the first light stanchion and the sidewalk in front of the senior center, will be a forty-by-forty tent. This will be for people who absolutely must have shade. We would ask that if you are a hearty soul and you can, you can get by without being under the shade, please leave space under the tent for those that can't. There would be chairs set up socially distant under the tent for those that do need that shade. There would be a small tent set, just a pop-up tent under which the peg access cameraman will be. And then they would also be right at the sidewalk in front of the senior center. There would be two ten-by-twenty tents set up with tables and chairs underneath to accommodate the finance committee, the select board, council, clerk, moderator, and myself. And there'd be water stations at the two front corners to either side of the, the official's table. Most, most proximate to the building. So there'd be three locations where people could get cold water. The sidewalk will be marked leading to the meeting hall where there would be doors pegged open, and that would be the access to restroom facilities. And that is still a work in progress to determine between now and Saturday how we're going to play gatekeeper on how many people are in the bathroom at any given time. So we're, we're likely going to have to station somebody there that makes certain that we don't have people, you know, piling into the bathroom in a, in a situation that doesn't allow for social distancing. The area behind the police station, the driveway that comes down behind the senior center from the police station will be blocked. It won't be blocked in a, in a way that makes it unsafe. It'll just be cones, so if public safety needed to get through for any reason, they go right over the cones, but just to make certain that we don't have people coming in, driving in that way, which defeats the purpose of having a voter check-in. You should have seen an email from the moderator this evening with a few suggestions, having, him having reviewed this plan. So we'll tweak this a little bit to accommodate his, his issues that he raised. But all things considered, this looks like the plan. The second page, just in bullet form instead of graphically, just lays out what we're, we're expecting the the schematic to look like. One thing additionally that's not yet resolved that we're still chasing is PA system. We do have on reserve a sound system that can accommodate an outdoor event of a thousand people. The problem is it only has one wireless microphone. So push comes to shove, we'll, we'll have to deal with that. We'll have to pass it, you know, up and down the table with
Are we cleaning it in between?
I was going to say with alcohol wipes, you know, on the table in front of each, each participant. So we do have calls out to a couple of other sound, sound rental companies to see if there's a, a way to do a system that can accommodate this crowd size being outdoor, but also have more microphones. I think that covers everything I was going to say about that, but I think, I'd encourage you to poke holes in it if you see any.
The only thing I would add is I really strongly suggest masks for everybody to follow the state guidelines.
Yep.
Do we have the Boy Scouts able to get microphones to people in the audience?
I, particularly in, in, in COVID world right now, I would not encourage us to, to use the scouts to be going person to person.
Do we have a place that they can walk to if they want to ask a question?
Right now, we have one microphone. So we, we don't, we don't yet have that piece figured, but you know, I, I have, I have expectation that tomorrow we'll have a better sense on, on how the, you know, the microphone and asking questions is going to work. Ideally, we shouldn't have a mic being passed around. We should have it on, on a stand, and people that have a question, to the extent that they're able, come to the microphone. If they're unable, and we had to bring it to them, then obviously, we would, we, we would accommodate that, but we shouldn't be passing it.
Is the tent a canopy or does it have sides?
It does not have sides. I can send you an email when I go back up to the office of the photograph of it. But no, no sides, so you'd be able to, you'd be able to see through it from the parking spaces behind and to the side of it as well.
Okay. Better air circulation.
Indeed.
Okay. Well, let's make it work and keep working on the sound system piece of it, and hopefully, this is a smooth and quick meeting. Right now, it doesn't look like rain, so I think we're good to go.
Should be. Okay, so that was that. Next, we have four point one-three, discuss net metering warrant article, which you should have a document that I prepared at Veronica's suggestion. I don't know if I fully covered all of the points you were looking to have covered in this document, but I, I I copied, cut and paste basically your questions and then added a few other bits and pieces to it. And I do have some additional information with me this evening to address some of the other questions you emailed, I think, as recently as just this afternoon, Veronica. So I guess I would turn to Veronica, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, and, and let her ask, ask her questions or address any concern she has in the document, because I'd like to get this document out with the town meeting packets as well.
Yep.
So should I go ahead?
Please.
So on, on the document, I do have comments on it. I get, but I have, I have. All right, so energy committee. I know that you addressed that in the last question. But there is a document called the Town Energy Reduction Plan. That is what a green community is required.
Correct.
This was twenty twelve, and this is what the energy committee has been working with, and they did those quarterly reports pretty religiously up until twenty seventeen when the, I guess, I, I would say that in this document, the town administrator and energy committee liaison was the town administrator. The land use coordinator was Karen Chapman, and she was very engaged in this, and the facility manager, Mark Mercurio. None of them are here anymore.
I still am.
It was Andy Sheen at the time.
In seventeen? Seventeen, no.
But this document was written in twenty twelve. So did you?
You said seventeen, so, okay.
That was the last time a quarterly report went out.
Yeah, they're, they're done annually now, I believe.
I can't find them online. I can't even find where they meet online. So that could be just the online issue that we're having with the town website. But in any event, one of the things in this document was onsite renewable energy pro- project. So there's Memorial Hall, the sloped south-facing roof on the building. We plan to obtain a formal estimate and site feasibility. If you go to the highway department, Bass Power LLC completed a preliminary site feasibility for the new garage, indicating the roof would support twenty kilowatts that would meet ninety percent of the onsite demand for electricity. The police department, in the Townsend Police Department capital plan, they identify the opportunity for a sixty-five-point-five kilowatt solar PV array located at their headquarters. Additionally, they are pursuing the possibility of installing a solar PV array mounted on a carport, which would meet multiple needs in the facility. So these are things for solars that were part of the town's plan. I will now go to the MVP plan, which was just completed and is under review by the state.
Can I, can I, can I stop you for a second, Veronica? Isn't that completely separate from this agreement with a private company?
No, not really.
No, I think it is.
It goes to the solar plan for the town. And if we enter into a twenty-year plan with, and let me get to the plan, in the first paragraph of the net metering agreement, agreement, it is would lock in for twenty years at least a fifteen percent annual discount on all of the electricity needs of the town. would lock in for 20 years, at least a 15% annual discount on all of the electricity needs of the town. And what I'm saying is that if you look at the plans that the town puts in place, and I'll continue with the MVP plan, high priority under electricity and communication infrastructure in the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan that the town just prepared, says study the feasibility of solar panel installations on town buildings, parking lots at the high school, behind the library, et cetera. You could look at the senior center, install solar panels with battery storage. The timeframe for this is a study of one to three years and implementation in five to 10 years. So these are plans that are in place right now that the town is, I thought, looking at. So if you go to the net metering agreement, that, you know, that we're considering. I guess I'm curious, and this is a question for Dawn and Wayne. Did you guys give any of this, any consideration? I, I wasn't on the board when all of this was being negotiated. So my question is for the two of you. Did, was there any consideration at all of the direction that the town was thinking of going in?
I, I know that study and the proposals, it was never executed on, obviously, because of, I assume financial reasons. That being said, a private citizen on his parcel of land built a solar farm, for lack of a better term, and is offering us a 15% discount on our, our energy bills, if I understand the, the agreement correctly.
One of the questions that I asked of Jim today, because I told him I was going to ask this. I haven't seen any numbers other than the net metering number that says we would save about $30,000 a year. The data that I want to see is what are our current bills? What if we did this net metering just for town hall and looked at the kilowatts for town hall? And maybe town hall is probably the least likely because it is to have solar panels on it. It is a historic building. We might not want to put something on the roof there. So perhaps, I, I guess I'm looking for what was considered. What did people? What, what, what are we thinking here? What is the solar plan for the town? And so back to my question, Jim, what does this actually save us? I'm not thinking where this is 15% off our total bill.
Okay. I'll take this in, in baby bites. What has been being considered, I can say from my perspective Veronica, the thought of paying prevailing wages, and I'm going to repeat myself from, from a week ago, the thought of paying prevailing wages and borrowing long-term to build solar facilities on town property versus the opportunity of purchasing net metering credits. For me, there's not even a comparison. We're not increasing our debt. We're not encumbering our buildings or our properties. And we're able to access it immediately versus, as you said, I think you said five to 10 years was the implementation plan likely. The, I'll share a document that I, I believe you've already, I know you've already seen, but just so we, we can have it up for everybody. This is a spreadsheet that shows under the key assumptions in the top, a fixed discount of 15%. Unitil's inflation rate being carried at 2%, and that comes from the State Department of Public Utilities. Your, meaning the town, allocation of their total project is pegged at 50%. And the degradation expected of the system is 0.6 of a percent each year that the output would be, be lost by 0.06% a year. So if you look at the year one, the total production in kilowatt hours, which is the, the unit that you, you, you buy, that you pay against for your bills, the entire system down there would be generating 1.896 kilowatt hours. Our portion of that would be 948,428.
So we're buying half of the electricity from that system is what you are saying?
To be specific, we're not buying electricity, we're buying credits.
Credits. Okay.
Just, just so people understand, but, but yes, this document stands for that proposition. Half of the output in net metering credits goes to the town of Townsend. If you look again in line number one, system year one, the credit rate is pegged at 21.71 cents. So that's what a kilowatt hour of power is in this analysis on your unitill bill. I believe it's a little higher than that today. This sheet goes back, I think, a year. So the credit value is 205,885 dollars. And we would be purchasing it for 175,002 dollars for an annual savings of 30,883 dollars. Cumulative savings after year one is 30,883. You then follow that table out over the 20 years and you get to the, the three-quarter of a million dollar savings at the end of the cumulative savings column on the far right. Now, to your, your point about the energy committee and power reduction, consumption reduction as being one of the goals under the Green Communities Act. I have reason to believe that that 948,000 kilowatt hours in system year one, our allocation is high. I don't think we need that much of this. I don't think we need that many credits right now. I find a document that goes back to 2015 where we were closer to 875,000 kilowatt hours.
And we've reduced.
And we've reduced since because we, we converted the streetlights to LEDs. While that's not a huge thing, it is a reduction. So we are way, way in the weeds right now at this level of detail. What town meeting is discussing is whether or not conceptually, they think the selectmen should be authorized to have this discussion. And maybe, and maybe lead to the execution of a net metering contract or maybe not. I'm not saying we shouldn't be having this discussion, but I just want to make it clear that this isn't what town meeting is being asked. Town meeting is being asked, do you want to give your chief executive board the authority to do this analysis, have this discussion with this private concern that may or may not result in a net metering credit contract?
I, I guess what I'm saying, yeah, I realize that. But I think that this discussion is one that the town needs to be had and needs to have. And I, I think it's one that the select board needs to have. And I think that we can have it and then come forward with a plan and an actual contract. Because as a, I mean, I'm, I'm a new selectman, but I will tell you that if I were in that audience, I would be saying no, because what I asked to be done was to come out with the out clause. You know, how do we get out of this if we choose to go in a different direction? And the answer is we can't.
Correct.
And, and so the question that is on town meeting this week is the same question that was on town meeting in January that was amended by the people. And sorry you guys, but I don't see where the work was done between January and now to answer the question that at least I had.
Candidly Veronica, that's because there is no good answer. You asked a question, the answer was, there is no out. These are the standards for these deals. You, you, you can ask the question, but just because you ask a question doesn't mean that the answer is going to be any different than the information you were given in January, which is that this is the deal. If town meeting doesn't want this deal at a 20-year tie-in, amen, then town meeting says no.
They're not voting for the deal. They're voting for us to go into one. I would, as a town person, rather.
No, 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 it's to negotiate one. It's not, we don't have to, if negotiations fall off, we don't, we're not signing contract.
So let me continue here. We're, we're, let me continue then. We are signing on and, and the total here after 20 years is about what we pay for trash in a year in the town. So putting that it's a savings and yes, as the, I'm serious, as the.
It gets, it gets you two-thirds of your land use coordinator in year one Veronica.
Well, I don't think.
You put the pilot on, you put the pilot on top of it.
I'd like to, so I'm not even going to argue that.
You get the pilot on top of it and this project pays for your land use coordinator almost entirely.
The pilot is nice. We get that one way or the other, but we are looking at a solar field that 83% of it is in the 100-year floodplain. This is again documented in the MVP report.
I would posit, I would posit that that's irrelevant as well though Veronica. What's the relevance of that?
The relevance of that is we are looking, if you attended those MVP presentations that the state did about why the state is pushing communities to look at the MVP, to, to do these MVP preparedness plans is to look at what you have to become a resilient community. Because over time, and they have data on this, these hundred-year storms are happening more. So all, where we may not have seen it, it's possible. No, I'm not saying this is going to happen tomorrow, but it's possible that the solar field could be underwater and we haven't done anything for ourselves as a resilient community by doing that. I'm not saying to throw it all out, you know, throw the baby out with the bathwater, because we might want to consider doing something like this. If we had an overall solar plan, maybe we want to, we can see how many kilowatt hours that, that's used in town hall. Maybe we want to do baby steps. And if 20 years is the only type of contract that we can go into, then okay, let's do town hall. And let's see what our overall strategy is. We could put on top of the library senior center parking lot, a canopy with solar panels. It's really sunny out there. We'll know for sure on Saturday how sunny. You wouldn't, that would control snow as well. I mean, you wouldn't have to do as much plowing underneath as maybe you have to do now.
Actually, it actually makes the plowing harder.
Does it? Because it slides all off the panels?
And, and you can't just, and you can't plow straight. You got to go around the stanchions.
But still, you know, if it's a totally covered parking area, there are things that we could look at and there are things that are in existing plans for the town that the energy committee, I'm, I'm putting work on them, but they could, part of their mission, I thought, was to look at this. I know their focus has been on ways to reduce the kilowatt hours. Appropriate, but it could be ratcheted up to look at an overall strategy for the town. There's a second solar field in town. Have we negotiated with them? What other providers have we looked at? We can have more than one net metering as long as we don't go over the kilowatt hours that we expend as a town. So all I'm saying is, I, we don't have a contract to put forward in the sense that there are blanks in there. And as a town resident who wasn't on the select board, I would have wanted to see a contract without blanks. So in any event.
But the point, the point, again, to come back to little Veronica is town meeting is not being asked to vote on that document with blanks or without blanks. That is not the purview of town meeting. Town meeting does not negotiate contracts. The executive body, the Board of Selectmen does. What town meeting is being asked is, do we want to authorize the Board of Selectmen to chase this? And it may be that they determine that because of the MVP, because of the 100-year floodplain, because of the energy committee's report from 2012, or any other reason, that it doesn't end in a contract. But I want to be clear that we're not negotiating a contract on the floor of town meeting. That's not what's at play here.
But what it does do, Jim, is allow us to sign without going back to the town people.
That's your job.
That is, it is. But I would amend then from the floor of town meeting to say, provided that the Board of Selectmen comes back with a contract that doesn't have any blanks in it and that fits the overall strategy of the town for electric power. I am not at all opposed to solar, but I think that we have looked at one and only one place for it. And we're putting all our eggs into that basket for 20 years. If we sign that, we have, we have just crossed off for 20 years, I'll be dead. We will have just crossed off everything for solar for the town for the next 20 years.
Correct.
So that's where, that's where I have an issue and I had really hoped to see.
Well, Veronica to that.
So I would not allow the Board of Selectmen to sign a contract. I would allow them, certainly we're allowed to look at what's on. I don't think we need the approval of town meeting.
You do. Any contract over three years requires the authorization of town meeting. That is the.
To negotiate or to sign.
To execute. That is the beginning and end of.
To sign. We could negotiate the contract. We already have, obviously.
No, 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 don't hold it, hold on. I take exception to that. We have not negotiated any contracts because we have to have this done first. And you're, you're completely within your right as a Board of Selectmen now. You're on the board. If you don't agree with the, the, the agreement and as we go through negotiate, that's your vote.
I think that the way the article was written, the town meeting gives all the power to the Board of Selectmen.
That's the way it's supposed to be.
But I believe the people of town should be able to know exactly what they've given the Board of Selectmen the power to do. So I would say, sure, you can negotiate it, but you cannot execute it until you come back to us, the townspeople. And in that process, please tell us what the overall solar plan is for the town. That's all.
My, my view of that, which is going to be counter to yours Veronica, is that's an abdication. It's an abdication of your role and responsibility as the chief executive board, which is to do executive function. But we, we disagree. I mean, I, I, I think that your points about having an overall solar plan are, are spot on. I, from my perspective, looking at what it would cost to build given prevailing wages.
We're taking your word. We haven't explored that. We couldn't.
You don't need to take my word. You do know as a, as a matter of course, without taking my word, that government pays prevailing wages on their construction projects, right?
So everything costs money.
And, and if I, if, if I could stop and take a timeout here, this is for decision on the town floor. They can, they can vote for it yes or not. This is what we put forward and if, if they want to voice their group views, you can as well. That's, that's your right. We're not deciding anything here tonight.
Can I walk across the floor as a selectman?
Either way you want. Sue's done it both ways the last couple of years. So that's completely up to you. I'm not going to say one way or the other. But for the sake of argument for tonight, I think we have the information to put in front of the, the townspeople to show
Okay, so I want.
We're talking about.
I want one thing removed then. Let's go to your paper here. One thing, not one thing. I think would be nice if you put in, I, I asked you today, what was the bill for FY 2020? And I know that we still, you know, the months because of COVID. But so what was the bill and what does that 15% savings actually get us? If this were in effect in 2020, what would our bill have been versus what we did pay? So that's the number I would like to see.
Yep.
And I would like that in here.
One moment, please. I want to take them one at a time. You asked me that just this afternoon. So I, I've not yet determined what that number is because I'd have to go back through the energy budgets, which contain both electricity and gas and parse it out. So.
So is it electricity and gas in? Yeah. So in town hall, just look at town hall. You don't have to look at every building. Give us one building so we get an idea. in town hall. Just look at town hall. You don't have to look at every building. Give us one building so we get an idea. Do we have any buildings that do not have gas in them?
Top of my head, I don't believe that's that we do. No, I can get the number and I I'll be able to get it tomorrow. I'm just saying the reason I wasn't able to get it.
Oh, tonight?
Tonight, when you asked this afternoon, it's because it's not, it's not a number that you can just write out. But but I will have that contained within this document.
So I would like to see that. I would like you to take out the sentence that says accordingly, if we are to avail ourselves to a net metering project. This is our only opportunity. That's a judgment call. So take that out.
I I disagree with you that that's a judgment call. Right now, the net metering allocation that is available in Unitil's distribution zone. See, unlike the Commonwealth of three hundred and fifty-one communities, we don't have the ability to purchase power from or credits from. You know, someplace in Mendon or Oxford or Uxbridge. We have Fitchburg, Lunenburg, Townsend and Ashby. And Unitil has met its cap for what they're what they're obligated to provide for net metering already. So what is on the table now is all that's on the table unless the law changes, which it could. I mean, I I'd be happy to amend that to say, you know, unless and until the law changes, but right now, this is where we are.
Seven fourteen twenty twenty, DOER press release Baker Polito administration continues to advance solar progress with incentive program updates. And they've added kilowatts. I don't know if you've read that, but it just.
I have and I have, and this is something that's been put forth for the last four years and has never made it out of the legislature.
But it may. And so it is not. I want you to strike that sentence.
I'm not. This is a document that I've created. I I believe that I have an obligation to be fully informative. I would be happy to say unless the law changes. But right now, this is, this is all you've got. And if you want to speak against it on the floor, God bless you, say, you know, I disagree with this this line. I think that this is. I think you you call it a used car salesman tactic.
I'm going to go into the back room and see if I can bring you a deal. That that's what it sounds like to me. I just think that sentence needs to be struck because I think it's a scare tactic. If you don't vote for this, forget it, you guys. And I don't think that's true.
Well, I think the facts are the facts. Right now, that is a true statement. If the law changes, and I will gladly amend it to soften it to say unless the law changes. You cite something that's coming out of the Baker Polito administration that may in fact result in the law changing. I'd be happy to recognize that that could happen. It hasn't happened in the last four years.
Have we looked at the other solar field in town?
My understanding when that one was permitted, it was permitted for the on-site use for the 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 residential units on site. That was my understanding.
Have we checked into that? Maybe we should spread our wealth if that's the case. I mean, I'm I'm just saying this. I I just think that's a judgment call. I don't think it's a fact that I don't think it's a fact that it is our only opportunity. Maybe it is, but I don't think.
Yes, it is. You you've not offered anything to suggest that it's not a fact. You've offered potentiality that there may be some change in the law, but right now that is the fact.
The the contract authority can negotiate for a better better deal if one is to be had. That is, I would like to take out if one is to be had. Oh, I want to confirm that we are not required to accept this as it stands if town meeting votes for this. Sorry to be belaboring this way, but these are questions that.
How do these words, how do these words not say that Veronica?
That's up to us.
And how does how do these words not say it? A yes vote on this article will allow the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a net metering agreement. Right there, to negotiate an agreement. Negotiate is a pretty specific word that isn't saying to accept this agreement, to swallow this agreement. It's to negotiate an agreement. The contract would be for twenty years and would lock in at least fifteen percent because that's what's being offered. At least fifteen, which implies it could be better than that on all of the electricity needs of the town. I don't know how you see that that is anyway implying that if town meeting says we authorize the board that it has to be for that existing deal, which is.
That's it has to be.
Again, to my point, which is again to my point, why having that document on the floor of town meeting is dangerous because that's not what town meeting is being asked to approve. They're being approved that first paragraph.
Then it should not say with Lockbrooke Solar.
But it is.
If we are negotiating, I, why do we need this to negotiate? We need the town approval to sign.
No.
We can talk to them, but we.
You need the town, you need the town, you need the town meeting approval to execute any contract over three years.
Correct.
Any goods and services contract over three years. So that's why this is before town meeting.
Do we have a contract? Do we have a finished contract?
You haven't negotiated one yet because town meeting hasn't voted on it. If town meeting says yes on Saturday, you will then arrange with council, who has already reviewed that draft contract, the opening salvo, if you will, put forward by Next Amp at Lockbrooke Solar, and you would sit with them and say, we we think this is great, but we want twenty percent. Or we think it's great, but we only want five years.
Am I missing, Jim? Because it looks.
I don't know what you're missing because I'm struggling.
It looks to me like a twenty-year agreement has already been negotiated and reviewed by town council.
A document has been submitted by Next Amp, which is their standard form, has been reviewed by council. And then everything came to a stop because there is no value in spending any time beyond that unless town meeting says, yeah, we think that you should be authorized to negotiate a contract for net metering credit in excess of the three years. So until that happens at town meeting, why why spend another moment chasing something that isn't real? Because until town meeting says it is real, it's not. Nobody has negotiated anything.
Obviously, we have a different view. It looks like we've already, we have.
Well, Veronica, what I would suggest is you have a call with Adam to to go over this. Because he's done these before. He understands what they are. I would spend some time with him on on your concerns about the law and and where we're going with it. But for the the sake of just, and you know, this is a simple vote, yes or no, to negotiate or not negotiate. We have, this has not come before Dawn and myself or so before that, so. And it doesn't mean that we're going to sign a contract. This, you know, we're not signing this next Monday. I can tell you that right now.
But we.
I I don't fifteen percent is kind of a standard thing. Could we do better? Let's find out. And if not, we don't have to sign it at all. Just my thoughts. I mean.
Right. Wayne Wayne and Dawn, just out of complete fairness for Veronica here. The sentence in the document that's on the screen right now, the last sentence in number one. Accordingly, if we are to avail ourselves to a net metering project, this is our only opportunity. That's the line that Veronica takes exception to. I've, I I hear what she's saying and I I think editing it to say unless and until the law is changed, would make that, I I think, a little softer. Do either of you feel strongly about that being removed? Because if if there's a vote of the board to directly to remove that sentence from this document that I created, I'm going to do that.
I I don't think it adds any value, being in there or not.
Yeah, I don't see where it adds any value. But I have to agree with Jim. I this this isn't, we're not negotiating a contract. We can't even do anything. So a town says, yeah, go ahead, look at it, negotiate if it's beneficial to the community. So I know I haven't. And as far as, I know Veronica, you you put for something about the energy committee. I don't recall ever seeing their final plan. I do know that back in late two thousand twelve thirteen, they they were working on reducing energy costs throughout the town because we were doing
Right.
a lot of changes for lighting and that sort of thing to bring down some of our energy costs. But as far as what their plans were for a solar field, I've never seen anything.
Well, there is some information in this in this document. And again, before I before I publish it officially, if I understand correctly, then because there's the position that there's nothing, there's no value added by having that sentence is the consensus among members of the board that I should remove that sentence, that'll that'll meet Veronica's concern on the sentence.
Yeah, if that's what takes to move along, let's do it.
Okay, so I will remove that. The additional questions that Veronica had asked are are in this document. Veronica, you have concerns about any of the other portions of this document? I don't want to publish something that is is going to cause angst.
Yeah, the document that you reference under five for is a twenty-year contract the norm? I got paid not found, but I found what I believe is the same document and instead of a WG, it had like a VI or some such thing there. Um, but in any event, it it referred to PPA contracts or often as long as twenty years, not NMA. But I, you know, I found in the DOER stuff ten to twenty-five years.
Yeah, and the the first sentence that I wrote there is town council advises the standard length of contract for net metering or power purchase PPA agreements is twenty to twenty-five years. So directly from the the experience of our town council, it's twenty to twenty-five. My experience, for what it's worth, is also the twenty with generally two, five-year rights of extension.
Okay, so I I would say as far as this document goes, I would remove that sentence if that's the consensus of the rest of the board.
Yep.
And I would put in some hard fast numbers because that fifteen percent discount isn't a it's not like we're going to take the bills and cut it by fifteen percent.
We are actually going to do just that. Every electric bill that we have will be fifteen percent less than it would be if we did not do this.
Okay, so put numbers in there.
Yep, yep, we'd already agreed to that as well.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. There is an additional document, Veronica, that I told you I'd be seeking and hadn't yet received it as of Friday, but I did get it yesterday late from Vicky Tidman from the Board of Assessors. And your question was, what did the Board of Assessors consider when looking at pilot versus property tax? And it's a very brief response, but it is, there are several reasons why we chose a pilot. And for those following along, payment in lieu of taxes is pilot versus personal personal property tax. There's a growing trend for solar companies receiving personal property tax bills. They apply for an abatement through the local board of assessors. They are denied and then they file an appeal with the appellate tax board in Boston. It is happening more often that the ATB, the appellate tax board, is siding with the solar companies and saying that they are exempt from taxation. The towns are then responsible to pay the taxes plus interest back to the solar company. I've included the newspaper article discussing this matter. Another reason to go with pilot is how quickly solar equipment depreciates. It depreciates quickly in the early years of use. There was a calculation done with personal property assessment and taxes versus pilot. The town will actually collect more through pilot. Personal property tax factoring a tax increase of two and a half percent each year over the course of twenty years would generate approximately two hundred and thirty-five thousand thirteen dollars. Through the pilot, the town will collect two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighteen. Another advantage with the pilot is the ability to budget in the future. If for some reason the company decided not to pay its personal property tax, there is no real recourse for the town. When real estate tax bills are not paid, the town can put a lien on a property that does not apply with personal property. We, the Board of Assessors, looked at several pilot agreements from other mass municipalities. The price per megawatt DC ranged from five thousand to eight thousand. We felt the seventy-five hundred dollars per megawatt DC with a two-point escalator was appropriate. And the newspaper article is a Telegram and Gazette article that is January of nineteen and gives examples of communities that were using personal property tax. The appellate tax board overruled them and in one case, a community had to pay sixty-five thousand dollars back in tax, back taxes and interest to a private solar company. So that's the response I received from the Board of Assessors.
I'm good with the pilot. I'm guessing that the pilot has already been approved.
It has.
And doesn't go before town meeting again. So that's.
Nope.
Correct. It is a done deal, right?
It is. Correct, yes.
And that's kind of separate from the net metering.
It is.
I consider it like all part of solar, but anyway, it's it's separate.
All right. Next, four point one point four update IT contract with White Mountain IT Services. I received an email from Pete Paldino with White Mountain last Friday indicating that he anticipated that his superior would have executed the contract as amended by council. And we would have it yesterday. As of the close of business today, I still not received it. So my understanding is that it's it's due any moment. And once it's in hand, you will know. You've already voted to approve it and to sign out of session. So it'll be available for your signature as soon as we get it signed.
Okay. Great. Is that it, Jim?
That is indeed. Thank you.
Four two Board of Selectmen announcements, updates and reports. So four point two point one is to welcome the new building commissioner, Eric Schratrand. When does he start, Jim?
August third will be his first day.
Okay. And unfortunately, we got word that our water superintendent, we just went through the process with Kevin Godey, has withdrawn his name from consideration for the position. So we have to go back to the water commissioners and start the process over again.
We know why that is. In other words, do we have a a letter of non-acceptance?
I've seen nothing. I've just been told verbally. Wayne and I had a conversation. Wayne advised me. I subsequently left a message for the gentleman asking to speak so I could determine what it was that caused him to change his mind, just so we can change our game plan going forward if there's something that we're not aware of. And I also spoke with Mike McKeckren, a member of the Board of Water Commissioners. He called me and said that he doesn't know what the reason is, but that he's trying to find out as well. So that's all I know.
I just find it concerning that we have a person who was made an offer to, who accepted the offer, who went through the quarry and the.
Physical.
Physical and was all set to come.
Yep. I find it very concerning because this is the second one since I've been on the board.
In that department.
Yes. So I guess it is what it is right now. So let's work with the Board of Water Commissioners and come up with a a plan. Um, I don't know if either of you two had any other announcements. I do not have any.
Nope, I have nothing.
Veronica, you all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Right, four point three, written reports for board liaisons. I don't have any. I don't understand this one.
Yeah, my question is why written reports? I know I'm the one that said that if we we should do liaison reports and I said that because I read one of the policies, I've been reading the policies. It's the liaison policy and it said that there should be a place on the agenda for reports, not written reports. I don't know where that.
Yeah, I I for one am not providing a written report.
No. But if, you know, if you're the liaison to the council aging or the board of health or whatever.
And Jim, Jim, yeah, Jim, why don't you put that under the Board of Selectmen announcements, updates? If there is any, great. If there aren't, move along.
Excellent. Okay.
If you guys are okay with that.
I'm I'm okay with that. I do have a question about liaisons. I'm, I'm okay with that. I do have a question about liaisons. When do we assign those?
Let's do that at our next meeting to go through that. So we can go through and basically you pick and choose what you do or don't want and.
So you guys are probably already liaisons for other things.
We are.
And you might want to switch up. I don't know.
And we.
On the totem pole. So.
And we've done that every year. So we can have that discussion the next meeting.
All right.
Veronica, this next one is probably not going to be used since you haven't been here yet. So review and approve meeting minutes from February 11th, March 10th, March 17th, April 2nd, May 1st and June 30th. Can I get a motion done?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for February 11th, 2020, March 10th, 2020, March 17th, 2020, April 2nd, 2020, May 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2020.
And I'll second that. I didn't have any issue, Dawn, did you?
No.
I'm sorry, Veronica, what did you say?
I was going to say there is one issue on the 10th, right, Veronica?
I, I did send updates for the 10th because I was at that meeting. And I read the minutes and it was about the, I might have talked about the road management. But I, I wanted to know the, in the part that it was mentioned, what I was looking for was the timeline for the MVP action grant for special town meeting versus annual town meeting to see if it was possible. That was the main reason that I had come to that meeting. Because just for the timing on that, would we do an action grant once we have the MVP grant in? Would we be able to get it on the morning?
And the, and the other thing that I, I think came up in the meeting of the 10th was the discussion about the command structure in the police department. And the draft minutes indicated that the board had agreed on a sergeant versus a deputy chief moving forward. But if you go back and listen, watch the video. The discussion starts with my saying that the draft budget we're talking about has a sergeant in place of a deputy chief just for the time being. But the structured discussion then went on and talked about it either being a sergeant or lieutenant or deputy chief. Ultimately, Dawn made the comment before we moved on to the next topic that we need in the future to be talking to the town administrator about what the structure is going to ultimately be. So I think the minutes imply that it was decided as a sergeant, but that's not in fact what the meeting, the meeting was. So there should be an edit on that just to make that clear.
Okay. Well, let's pull that one out for the sake of amendments and confusion and get it right. And then we can approve that at our next meeting.
Gotcha.
So Dawn, can you amend the minutes to pull that one out?
I make an amendment that we pull out the minutes from March 10th, 2020 until we re-review and make better.
Is that the one? Is that the correct date?
Yep, that's perfect.
Yep.
Okay, I'll sec, I'll second that amendment. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Four or five review and sign bills payable warrants. Can I get a motion there, please?
I knew that we review and sign the bills payable warrant out of session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn at the 22? Please, I'm starving.
At 8:22 PM.
And can I get a second, please?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Good night, everybody, and thank you for your time.
Good night.
Night, folks.
Night.